We would like to call this meeting to order. On Monday, May 9th, 5:38 PM. Thank you, sir. Thank you. We would like to call this public safety meeting to order today on Monday, May 9th, at about 5:38 PM. Present, we have President Todd McGee, Councillor Cocaine Given, myself, Israel Rivera. We also have Mr. McGivern, Councillor McGivern, the Mayor Garcia should be walking through the door soon.
Councillor Tolman is here, too.
Councillor Tolman is also here. And if I am missing any other councillors? I guess not. So I would like to entertain the order.
So, motion would be to, is the mayor here or no?
I just saw him walk that way. There he goes. Oh, he had the special entrance. There it is. There we go.
All right. So, motion is to have the mayor come up. I know he's just walking in now, to give an update. That's what happens when you come in late.
Yeah, yeah, the exclusive, the exclusive entrance.
Is there another chair for a microphone? Or will he take this microphone?
He could either use the microphone up there or... We'd like to also recognize Councillor Tessa Murphy-Rombeletti, who just walked through the doors.
All right. So, Bob Parent can't make it tonight. So, what we'll do is we'll go straight to the order of the HG&E to have them give their presentation based on the order that I gave.
Okay. So, we suspend the rules or just?
No, so it would be to take that one up.
Okay.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye. So, if I, if I may, Chair. First, thank you for everyone for coming out tonight. The attendance is phenomenal and obviously the room is a lot better from the last time, which was Ian White. We had the sound system that couldn't hear anything, which is probably a good thing on my part. But I'd like to thank HG&E for coming in and for providing food, snacks, coffee, water, everything. Very much appreciated that. That was very kind of you. The order that I filed was based on a meeting at Ian White, which was getting an update on the sidewalks and the cutting down of trees in certain areas, which then led to polls and it went outside the scope of what we were talking about. So, I said, "I will not answer on behalf of HG&E because I don't work at HG&E." So, we have the professionals here who can answer the questions that were raised. They're going to give an update based on the way I filed the order. Then we'll have time for Q and A. With that said, once again, thank you for being here. For me, I do have a conflict. I double booked, but I knew I was double booking because we were trying to get the date. And I did promise the group that we would respond to you in three weeks. This is the three-week mark. And HG&E could commit to this date. So, I will turn it over to the Chair. It is a public safety meeting. This is how we had to hold it in order to have HG&E come in and for public safety to run the meeting. There will be time for Q and A or public comment, as I said, but the Chair is in charge of that. So, we'd like to make sure that we keep a professional tone here and get the information that we need in order to move forward. With that, I will turn it back over to the Chair to then turn it over to HG&E.
I would like to thank you guys also for being here and as well as HG&E for coming in, being able to elaborate on the current situation. So, unless Councillor Given has anything to say, I'll hand it over.
Nope.
All right. Go, go ahead.
Well, good evening. My name is Jim Lovell. I'm General Manager at Hoyoke Gas and Electric. And with me this evening is our Electric Division Superintendent Steve Roy and Kate Sullivan-Craven, our Director of Marketing and Communications. I think, I'm guessing that most of you here probably are aware that HG&E is a community-owned utility and with a focus on, you know, competitive rates, good customer service, and reliability and reliable delivery of service. And we're here tonight to give you an update on some activity that's been ongoing focused on reliability, mainly in the area of the Highlands at present and for next year. And just want to point out right up front, so the work that's, the primary focus involves backyard electric services that have been there forever. But over the course of the years, our crews can't safely access those facilities in many cases because pools have been put in, sheds have been built, garages, fences, you name it. It just makes it very difficult to access. And those assets, in most cases, are at the end of their useful life. But before Steve gets into the presentation, I just want to state right out front, there's a flyer going around that's not made by HG&E and there's some inaccurate information in there. So, I want to state right out of the gate here that, you know, the work that's being done right now and the focus is if there's a backyard electric service, there's, in most cases, there's pole lines in the front yard as well. So, what's going to be happening is the high voltage line that's in the back is going to be replaced and put on the poles that are already in the front. We will not be moving backyard pole lines into the front of houses where there are no pole lines existing. And if there's no other alternative, you know, we're not against undergrounding if it makes sense, but Steve is going to tell you that undergrounding services is a huge expense compared to conventional overhead and would have a significant impact on bills. But again, if you have a pole line in front of your house, the line, the primary line will likely be moved to the front pole line. We will not be adding pole lines on any street that does not currently have a pole line. So, with that, and again, I thank everybody for coming out and we're all, if you don't get a chance to ask a question, we're always available to follow up at any point to make sure you get your questions answered. So, with that, I'm going to hand it over to Steve, who's going to go through some specifics on the current activity.
If you want to just advance to Slide 3, if you don't mind, starting on Slide 3.
Can I have each over here again? You can probably put that right up.
Just very quickly, here, just the next slide, please. Do you want me to go over there and bring the mic? Okay. Sorry about that. So, on the next slide, you'll see, if you can see, this is our mission statement. And as Jim mentioned, "We work to provide competitive rates, innovative and sustainable energy solutions to the city of Hoyoke, as well as reliable service." And you can see that we were established in 1902 and we live here. You know, we're customers of the Gas and Electric and we also work at the Gas and Electric. So, we're your neighbors and we're not looking to make any sort of changes in your neighborhoods that won't be aesthetically pleasing or hurt property values or anything like that. And actually, I think we provide a service that improves economic development and property values because a lot of people are moving to the city of Hoyoke and looking at our low electric rates and seeing that as a benefit to the city. Do you want to move forward? Okay. So, just to kind of set the groundwork here, I just want to explain the difference between a secondary line and a primary line. So, on your utility pole on the very top in red there, those are the primary lines and those are the higher voltage lines that go throughout the city. And then the secondary lines are the lines that go to your house. So, I think it just establishes kind of a baseline to this conversation because we are looking to move the primary line into the front yard or into the, onto existing poles along the street or along the public right of way. But it is not our intention or our goal to move all of the secondary lines. When it makes sense and when we're working with a particular customer and they're interested in that, of course, we will consider it, but it's not one of our primary goals. Steve is going to take it over.
Hi. So, as, as part of our planning process, each year we update, we have a 10-year capital plan, which we evaluate all our assets and try to make a plan more so that we don't end up with a bunch of unexpected expenditures just in one year, so that we can help to balance the rates moving forward. As far as preventive maintenance, we do pole inspections. It's 10% of our poles get inspected annually. We do have a joint ownership throughout the city with Verizon. So, we own half the poles and Verizon owns the other half. The half we own is basically, if you take Cherry Street and divide it all the way up the middle, all the way up to West Cherry Street, we basically own south of that and Verizon owns the pole north of that. One thing to be note is if you are in an area where Verizon does own poles, currently they are going through and inspecting all of their poles within the city. So, as part of that, they are required, they, they do an inspection at the interface where the ground and the pole meet. So, in order to do that, they dig down a couple of feet. So, you will notice that there are probably DigSafe markings out on your street and that's just so that they can do the hand digging around the pole to make an inspection of the pole. It doesn't mean that the pole's getting replaced or anything like that. But that is one of the questions that we've, we've been getting asked lately as to why, why there are so many poles that look marked up in certain areas. Some of the lessons learned that we had over the year, so the 2011 snowstorm that we had on Halloween was a variable, very valuable lesson to us and helped to shape some of the decisions we've made in the last decade. One of the items that did come up during that is that, and it was across the industry in the Northeast, was how valuable or important it is to have an ongoing tree trimming maintenance plan. So, prior to 2011, our tree trimming or our tree-related issues for outages represented roughly about 40% of our outages. That has been reduced down to as low as 12% annually. Last year, we had some more weather-related events, so that picked up a little bit. But that has shown with the increased tree trimming we've been doing throughout the city to have a positive effect for the customer's reliability. One other item or another item is we learned during that storm that backyard pole sets were a major issue where those were the areas where you tend to have a lot more trees around the wires. And that was the areas where we had a lot more damage to our system. Those residents also experienced longer restoration times. The areas where the tree or the pole lines were in the front and the services were fed from the front, most of those residents were back on within a few days. And the areas with the backyard feeds, most of them, it took about five days before we could safely restore everybody. The other thing we learned at that time was the importance of advanced notification to get mutual aid. We were one of the fortunate utilities around in the Northeast that we requested mutual aid in advance of the storm. And we had crews that came up from all the way up from North Carolina. So, we were able to hit the ground running after the storm, which helped to get our system back up and running. So, these are just some of the lessons learned that have helped to shape our decision-making over the last decade. Okay. Next slide. So, one of our main focus, about 20 years ago, we had some, some infrastructure was starting near the end of its life at our substations. So, we had to make a decision at the time as to whether to stick with our current 4800-volt systems throughout the city or to upgrade it for future expansion. So, at the time, back 2002, we made a forward-looking decision to begin transitioning the high voltage lines to 1380. So, we are nearing the completion of that 20-plus-year project and should be completed in 2023. The benefits of increasing the primary voltage to 13,800 volts throughout the city are it's allowed us to reduce our voltage losses throughout the system. It's also allowed us to develop different control schemes so that if there is an issue out in the system, we are able to isolate it to a small area and other circuits are able to pick up that load. We've seen in the areas we've already converted that we're able to minimize the number of customers that are out during sustained outages. Some of the challenges we do have as we go through here is we do have a lot of aging infrastructure. We do have some backyard pole lines. Those, as Jim mentioned, do create accessibility issues and also some safety issues for our crew. When the crews can work out in the street, they're in their, you know, working out of the vehicle, the buckets are insulated, which provides an extra layer of protection for our employees. As we go into the backyard, many of these poles can get to be 60, 70 years old. We don't have full control over those poles in a lot of areas because we don't own them all. So, it does become a safety risk for our employees to have to climb up the poles. The impact to customers, as we, as we're going with these conversions over the next few years in the Highlands, is you're going to see some planned outages. So, we will provide advanced notification of these planned outages. You're going to see some traffic impacts just because there's going to be construction vehicles out in the street. And you're also going to have the ability, once the lines are upgraded in your area, for future load growth as your needs change over the years. In the bottom left is just a picture that, of some damage we had over the weekend in one area. There was a pole line between two sheds and a retaining wall. Luckily for us, it was in a Verizon area and we were able to temporarily feed some customers from a different location. But this would have been a very challenging pole to try and even get a new pole placed in. So, it's just, just showing, you know, the impact or the issues that we tend to have with some of the pole lines is there's really no place to access them. So, last year, at the request of the DGR Committee and City Council, we did do an analysis for whether, to try and underground the entire system. So, the impact based on 2020, 2020 data would have been that it would cost $284 million to underground all the wires that were overhead. The impact to the ratepayers would have been, would have resulted in a 75% rate increase over a 30-year period. Since 2020, we've seen inflation, we've seen supply chain issues, and we're seeing roughly for a lot of our costs of, some, some of our equipment has tripled in cost for trying to get it. Recent estimates we did last week were showing that, that number that we presented last year to the City Council would probably be about 20% higher right now based on current market pricing. So, we'd be seeing roughly $341 million. If you divide that amongst all our customer base, that would be $19,000 per customer that it would equate to. When we do go underground, usually it's on new developments where the developer bears the full cost for that installation. And then the developer charges the, obviously it puts it into the cost for the home. When we do have the opportunity to go underground, we will, but typically it requires additional funding to make it cost-effective. Some examples, our state projects that were done on Pleasant Street, North Hampton and South Street, North Hampton and Cherry Street, Commercial Street, and recently Lyman Street. Yep. So, as part of our vegetation management, we do follow, there's a national standard that gets bound by the National Arborists Association. These are just some examples based on the trees as to how, how a tree would be cut or pruned in an area. We do work with certified arborists and also with a city forester when we're making any repairs in the city. Next slide. So, over the next two years, we're going to be working in 2022 on our H2 and H4 circuits. So, the H2 circuit, this is just showing the remaining work. All the work that is remaining on this circuit is just replacing overhead wire, primary wire. So, that's the wire you would see at the top of the pole. It's going back in the same location as it is now. And then there's some aging, aging poles that would be, new poles will be put in the same location. Next slide. The other area we'll be working on this year is in the Oakdale section, which consists of the same, same thing, where going along the streets where the primary wires are near the end of their life in the street, we're going to be replacing the, the wires at the top of the pole, putting new wires in and new poles where the existing poles did not evaluate well or at the end of their life. 2023, so this map shows our H1 circuit. So, this is in the Mountain View and Central Park. So, we have one transformer that feeds all of Mountain View Park, Central Park Drive, Steiger Drive and those streets. That transformer is at the end, it's nearing the end of its life. So, that transformer is going to get replaced next year. All the other underground cable in that area was replaced in the last 15 years, so that it'll be suitable. So, the customers in that area will see roughly a six-hour outage next year at some point when that transformer is changed out. And then there's some underground cable along Hampton Knowles Road that will be replaced in the same location. Next slide. Okay. Here is also some other work that's going to be done, our H1. So, in this area, it's the same thing, replacing overhead wire in the same location where it is. There is, in the blue area, there's some primary wire. So, this is pretty much the only area where we still have existing primary wires in the backyard. So, that's the high voltage wire. So, we're taking that out of the backyard. In some areas, we can do some modifications right at the street to be able to serve that from a different area and... Yep, I think that's all I got. Yep, for that slide, that's mine. And then the last, last area we're going to be working is the southern part of the Highlands as well. It's going to be the same thing, replacing poles is required and replacing overhead wires in the same location where they are. So, the primary wire is in the street, nearing the end of its life. So, we're just going to put new primary wires in the same location.
I just want to mention that recently the state of Massachusetts adopted a decarbonization roadmap and that was in 2020. And then in 2021, the state senate passed an act to create next generation climate policy in the state of Massachusetts. And so, these are some other targets that we are closely monitoring at the Gas and Electric. Currently, our electric portfolio is 95% carbon-free. So, we're well positioned to meet some of the targets that are, have been set by the state. But we also need to look at electrification of the building sector and also the transportation sector that we expect to come. And so, this project, this conversion project that Steve just outlined, is going to put customers in a position to be able to electrify. And if they choose to get an electric vehicle or air-source heat pumps to heat their homes, there will be enough infrastructure from the street to be able to provide that extra service and extra capacity to each house. In addition, you know, at the Gas and Electric, we make decisions based on the needs of our ratepayers. So, we're able to create crafty and creative or energy efficiency and conservation programs so that, you know, people can look at electrification, weatherizing their homes and making sure they're making the best decisions for, for their families. So, so we are working on getting to that roadmap of 2050, net zero by 2050. And I think that's, we'll open it up for questions if people have them.
Thank you. Hello. Okay. Thank you. Before we open it up for questioning, Councillor Given, do you have any questions? You don't? Mayor? No questions? Any other councillors in the room have any other questions? We're all good? You have a question, Tessa? Yes. That would be great if you could help with the microphone. So, if you have questions for public comment or for HG&E or for us here at the Public Safety or for the mayor who's here, feel free to walk up to the microphone, state name and address, and ultimately speak up so that the people on Zoom can also hear you.
Hi. I'm Laura Ferguson. I live on Jefferson in Lexington. And I have a question. You had mentioned that it would be a 75% increase over the next 30 years if we were to do underground wiring. Can you tell me what the increase has been over the past 30 years of HG&E?
Not tonight. I don't know what the rates were before all of our time there. So, actually, there's someone here who might know that, but...
Because that would be helpful for us to know what the increase has been over the past 30 years. Because if it's been 75%, then we would have a sense of what our increases would be over the next 30 years. And also, it would be helpful to know what we would be saving or what HG&E would be saving by putting in underground wires in regards to cost for repairs over the next 20, 30 years and all of those things that go into. So, it would be interesting to know what we've spent over or what our increases have been over the last 30 years to get a sense of what it would be like going forward 30 years.
That's a good question. So, the 75% rate increase, that would be just to tackle our system costs. So, that's not including transmission rate increases, which have been going up roughly 10% a year. That's not including cost of energy, which in the past year has tripled.
Right.
We've been able to mitigate some of those costs just because we own some generation. So, that's been able to kind of offset some of those costs. But everybody's seen in the Northeast, predominantly 50% of the power is generated from natural gas. And we've, I mean, you guys have seen the impacts on your utility bills last winter where the natural gas prices have been going up and they're still forecasted to continue to go up this upcoming year.
Right. But it would be helpful to know because based off of your estimation, $19,000 per homeowner over the next 30 years? Is that what your estimation was?
That's, that's just for the infrastructure cost.
Right. That's just for the infrastructure. So, that's what, $350 a year?
No, that equated to, I believe, roughly $600 per year, per customer.
Well, $19,000 over 30 years? Yeah, it's about 600, yeah. Actually, it would be a little bit less than 600, but that's okay.
Right. And then as...
And are there any grants that we could get and funding to pay for that upgrade?
We've looked into that and unfortunately, we haven't been able to find any.
Okay. It would be interesting to know what the increase has been over the last 30 years, just to give us all a sense of what this would be for. Because I know $19,000 is an outrageous amount of money for people to pay, but when you're thinking of moving wires and people's, you know, what their increase in their homeowners, it would be helpful to know if there's a way to make it work.
Thank you.
I'd like to know what would happen...
Excuse me. One second. One second. One second. Name and address, please?
Jacqueline Brown Hazard.
Thank you.
No, it doesn't affect me. I live on Walnut Street.
No, I just, it's just out of procedure. It's out of procedure.
I just have a question. If the infrastructure bill gets passed by the White House, would that have any effect?
No. The infrastructure bill that's being passed at the White House, the money that is carved out is for renewable energy. So, that'd be to fund wind power projects, hydroelectric upgrades and things like that. The other thing that's being carved out is to build an infrastructure for EV chargers. With, right now, there's current talks even within the state of Massachusetts by year 2035 that combustion energy vehicles will no longer be able to get sold. Any new combustion energy vehicles will no longer be able to get sold. So, one of the factors that have been limiting, you know, people from going towards electric vehicles is, you know, people have range anxiety. There's lack, right now, the lack of the EV charger network throughout the United States. So, these are some of the things that they're carving out to try and push or provide the funds to get a jump start towards the electrification process for the transportation sector and also even the heating sector.
Thank you.
And I should note that as, as there's a push to electrify the grid, this is going to put more strain on the transmission system because they're, they're predicting right now that the summer peaks are going to double and winter peaks are going to triple, which means they have to upgrade the transmission system to be able to handle those loads. As far as a local system or our distribution system, it'll be the same thing in the streets where our primary wires with these upgrades to the higher voltage, we should be in good shape. Some of the impacts we're going to see is we're still going to have to upgrade some of our substations to get the power out to different areas. And also, we are going to have to do some additional swap-outs for transformers to put higher... higher-rated transformers in different areas to be able to provide for the increased load that each home would see as it shifts or trends towards electric vehicles and also electric heating, heating systems.
Okay, Mimmy Panich, 134 Madison Avenue. And I have a couple of questions that are unrelated to each other. The first of them is, you know, I am in or on a street that still has the backyard lines. And, you know, HG&E has been great about showing up and working on those lines on the very rare occasions that we've had a problem. And as far as I know, there has been no access difficulty on that corner. You know, certainly, we have not had outages that lasted more than like 90 minutes at most over the past many years. But if we are targets of front yard electrification, obviously, that's going to affect us. And I wondered whether, since I think Mr. Epstein raised a very salient point about possible losses in real estate value, anybody has consulted with realtors or done any of the work to estimate what hit homeowners might take on their property values with this change? Because, you know, let's be real, it looks awful. It may be necessary, it may be the only thing we can do, although I don't know that we, civilians, have all of the evidence on that yet. But it looks terrible, and that has to make a difference to people. And I am really not looking forward to having my lines suddenly be spinning over the street the way some of the lines in the neighborhood now are. So has anybody done that work? Because that $19 million might look very different if it is offset by, say, $10 million in property values.
I'm not sure where the $19 million came from. The cost to go underground right now in $20, $22 was $341 million to upgrade the remaining system.
Well, no, I, the numbers even upgraded. This is just a matter of, you know, are we getting, does the hit from one or the loss in property value, if any, and there may not be any, you know, I don't know, but I think it's a reasonable concern. And if anyone has estimated that, it would be logically offset against the cost of actually running the wires underground. And the other thing is just, what do we know about the length of service of this new work? Because it's obviously a capital expense. And capital expenses, you like to think that capital expenses are for lasting upgrades. And this looks like a jury-rigged solution that may well be the cheapest way out of an immediate problem. But is it as sound as undergrounding would be? Will it last as long? And finally, if we're doing all of this work, can you possibly run the fiber optic for an eventual municipal fiber system at the same time? And with that, I will shut up.
So as far as your question about duration, so an overhead system typically, its lifespan is about 40 to 60 years. An underground system, 30 to 40 years. Life cost of ownership, there is no net savings for an underground system. And there is, when it comes time to do any expansion for an underground system, it is more costly than with an overhead system because everything's available. An overhead system, you have more frequencies for faults on the system, but your duration when there is a fault are shorter. When it's an underground system, they tend to be much longer outages, and it is much harder for us to pinpoint the exact location of faults in an underground system because sometimes it's not readily apparent when you go to a manhole. And we can't rely on the power until we identify where the actual issue is because we could cause other infrastructure issues doing that. And as Jim mentioned earlier, the only areas where we are putting or relocating and putting wires in the front are areas where we already have existing pole lines. So the streets that don't have pole lines in the front, they will not be getting new overhead wires in the front.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Susan Dresnowski. I live on Amherst Street. So we're just all wondering, what kind of notification will those of us on each street get when all this is happening? The people on Princeton came home and their trees were gone. You're going to take care of my tree, right, Mayor Garcia? No, yeah. That's an old, three-week-old joke. And how will we be notified? Because HG&E came to our house on Good Friday and said, "On Monday, you're going to lose power for an hour." And on Monday, I had everything set up that I was ready for no power. On Tuesday at 9:00, I was ready for no power. So on Wednesday, I thought it was safe, had things running. There was a, when everything was turned back on, I lost my dryer because of the change in electricity. HG&E came out the next day and just said, "Things like this happen." I think a simple card, rather than sending the youngest person on the crew to knock on doors if people are home, because my neighbors who were not home were not notified. They could carry the cards in the truck, put them in your doorway and let you know that there's tree work occurring on your street. And like I said, just a little notification for the correct time would have been really nice because I'm out quite a bit of money for a repair.
I'm going to apologize upfront if there was a lack of communication for the outage that you experienced. As far as the outage is moving forward, the plan when we do these upgrades on the system, so Amherst Street would be getting targeted before the end of June. So we are going to provide notification four days in advance. We're going to provide a follow-up notification two days in advance as well. And those are going to consist of, we have an automated system where we send out messages to the customers where we have contact info via their phone. We'll send a message out with all the information. We also send out a text and an email for those customers. We have that information on file. And the customers, we don't have that information on file. We send, we go to the door and we do place a card on the door with all of the relevant information for the timing.
No one got cards?
Okay.
Okay. But I'm just curious as to, so is there a plan for Amherst Street that we can see what side the poles are going to be on?
There's currently this year, there's no plans to replace any of the poles on Amherst Street or change, change the look on the street. If there is a poor pole or a pole that did not, that is at the end of its lifespan, a new pole would be placed adjacent to it. But there's no plans this year to be doing any aesthetics changes to the pole line on your street.
Okay. Like you're taking my tree, right, Mayor? Y'all saw it.
Thank you. Hi, Bob Frye, Pleasant Street. I appreciate you guys for coming out. And every day, I'm appreciative that I don't have to deal with Eversource and I get to deal with HG&E instead. It's great to have this, this municipal utility in the city. A couple of questions. One is, the first one is, is that $300 million figure a gross figure or a net figure? Because you're paying something for the work that you're doing now. So have you, if, if you did go underground, what would the, what would the difference in cost be? Because I'm assuming that $300 million is, is everything, right? So you're paying something to replace poles, replace wires above ground now. So I don't think that's an honest number, at least doesn't seem like it is. The second question is, you said no new poles in places that they didn't exist, correct?
Correct.
That's an outright lie. Princeton Street did not have any poles on it. It does now. People on Princeton, Princeton, people on Princeton Street asked to have underground service and they, they weren't given underground service. So, you know, in my case, I was lucky. I was fed off the line that they replaced, but I'm unpleasant, and I was able to get my line from the pole buried underground by paying for that myself. I appreciate being able to do that. But I don't think that that was, I was only able to get that because I kind of intervened as it was being, as it was happening, whereas other folks, when I told them, they said, "We didn't have that option. We didn't know." And it seems to me you could have gone to people and said, "Hey, you want to pay to trench? You want to pay to put the conduit in? We'll run the line underground." And I think, I think some people would have, maybe not everyone, but some people would have. That's, I'm just talking about from the pole to the house in that case. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Montario Ndaato. I'm, I live on Fairfield Avenue. So you made it sound like, you know, you're not adding poles, you're just moving some wires around, but can you actually be a little bit more clear about what is the visual impact of moving these wires? I mean, you're probably, when you move the secondary line closer to where the primary line is, you probably have to add transformers from the primary to the secondary line to account for the voltage difference, for example. I mean, there must be some kind of visual impact. I mean, you probably, given that you're adding more wires, you're probably trimming trees in that beautiful approved way. And so what is the real impact? I mean, you're not just moving, you know, it's not the width of a wire that you're moving. You're moving a lot of things around. So what is going to be the visual impact of that? It's not just not adding poles, there's much more there.
I mean, if there's existing primary wires in the street, we've been going through with our vegetation management program and providing clearance around the primary wires for reliability purposes to prevent outages. As far as the visual impacts, the wires would be going back on the same location on the pole. So long-term, I mean, in the interim, the wires get spread out so that we can do this without causing an outage while the new wire is put in place. So what they do is they spread the wires out, they put an extender on the crossarm, so that's the piece that goes sideways or perpendicular at the top of the pole. And so they'll move the primary wires out further, they run the new primary wires in, they tie that in, and then they just pull the old wires out.
So I assume that since you're, you know, you need wider cross, whatever you call it, I mean, you will have to trim the trees, for example, to fit that, right?
No, because as part, as part of the vegetation management program, we require 10-foot clearance around primary wires. So putting an extra one-foot extender at the end of a crossarm would still be within that 10-feet clearance around the pole or the primary wire.
Okay. Interesting. Seems unlikely, but. The other question, you mentioned that some of the poles in some of the backyards are not owned by HG&E, and since Fairfield Avenue, for example, is one of those places where there are backyard poles, I was wondering, who owns them?
Verizon.
All of them?
Yes.
So when I call you guys, because a branch was touching the wire, you guys came though?
Correct. We will come and do some maintenance around the wires, but the actual pole line, if the pole broke, Verizon would be the company that comes to set the new pole, and then we would transfer our wire to the new pole.
All right. Thank you.
Hey there, Pat Candyannis from Stanford Street. Just wanted to point out a couple of things. When I first moved here a few years ago, you had the fund, the $5,000 zero-interest fund, which we tapped into to put splits, which I thought was awesome, and thank you for that. Seems like something like that might be something that folks would potentially take up as you look at going underground or at least giving people that option to go underground. I know there's got to be a cost to that, carrying costs, no doubt, but it seems to me that, you know, perhaps some creative thinking around financing here might get us to, you know, again, yes, it's $19,000 for everybody over X number of time, over X number of years, but if folks want to have it buried instead of having, you know, kind of non-pleasant wires overhead, you know, why not use an infrastructure that you already have in place that's allowed people to do creative things that are, you know, either energy-saving or in this case, might be energy-saving, energy delivery and aesthetic improvements to the entire setup? So just want to throw that out there. Not sure you can comment back, but just saying, trying to get creative. My only other point is cannabis growers have flocked to this town because of the low energy costs. And so all those mills are fixed up down, you know, you have a lot of folks that have come into this town because energy is so much cheaper than everywhere else in the valley. And, you know, could that be another avenue, right? Where some of the businesses in town are paying a slight surcharge over time that, you know, is still not going to put them out, not going to keep them out of town. I don't want the mayor to get mad. But I'm just saying, you know, there could be an ability here to use folks who want to be in Holyoke, who want to support this, who otherwise aren't really benefiting the community all that much. I mean, there's some work and job benefit, of course, tax benefit, but maybe this is a way specifically drawing on the energy issue that you could get creative for another means to offset your $300 million infrastructure, which, again, give or take, you know, whether or not it was universal or whether it was incremental over years, you know, again, it just seems like planning or, you know, a project management or review on these things and looking at available funding options, available, you know, surcharges or tax measures could be a way to get creative on this matter. So, simple commentary. I don't know if you have any thoughts?
No, I think you make very good points, and we are willing to, as Kate mentioned, to get creative and work with customers on a case-by-case basis, even if we have to.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'm Beth Brogel from 55 Park Slope. I think, first of all, everybody loves HG. There's no question about that and the great work they do. But nobody likes this. This is hideous. This is ugly. And I don't know if that's arborist certified from 1945, because my arborist that I paid $10,000 to clean up all the trees in my backyard and another $8,000 to clean up all the trees on Lincoln Street in my backyard, said, "This is not right." And I don't think, are they arborists who are doing this cutting? It doesn't look like it. Can you answer who is actually doing the work? It doesn't look like they're pruning properly. It looks like they're just doing that. And now Lincoln Street looks awful, North Hampton Street starting to look awful, and I know that that's Harvard Street because I recognize that fence. And it, and it isn't right. And as a real estate professional, of course, it's going to impact your real estate price. Maybe not 10,000, but it's aesthetically unpleasing. So I'm hoping with all the people here tonight that maybe you can come up with a Plan B that isn't as drastic, because I don't think that's going to grow back before I'm in the home. Thank you.
I, I'm on 149 Central Park Drive. I guess that's owned by Verizon? I, I guess?
The poles in that area, yes.
But the wires are owned by you, right?
The electric infrastructure is owned by us, correct.
Okay, good. So I just had a question just to begin. The, the wires that you're putting in are going to cover all the electrical needs. So the way I understand it is that because in so many communities, the, the wires are small, there's too much load going on the wires and occasionally, no, I could be wrong, occasionally they have to come down into the ground as ground current because there's too much load? Am I correct or, I don't know?
In that sense, I don't believe so, no.
Okay. So I had a few questions. So the other person had asked how much is the net cost? So I'd, I'd love to know that, too, if you could provide that information. The other thing is, in terms of climate change, people have talked about how the, all the storms are causing things to fall down. So in California, they're having all these fires because the trees are hitting the lines. So I'm interested in if it's possible to at least choose like a few arteries that are carrying the heavier lines or the main lines? If it could be interesting to put those underground to prevent the storms from hitting those particular lines? And the other thing that I'm concerned about is, I know that there's a ton of businesses coming into our town because of the low energy cost, but they're using massive amounts of energy, and it's never calculated into they're coming here. So the cannabis, huge amounts of energy. And I think that it would be fair, because this infrastructure that's coming in that we have to pay for, part of the reason we're... we have to pay for, part of the reason we're paying for the infrastructure is to provide huge amounts of electricity. So I'm interested in the possibility, could you charge people a higher amount if they're using more electricity? So the people who are using cannabis are supposed to be making huge profits, I don't know if it's going to continue, but I think that they ought to pay if they're using a large amount.
Okay, that's, that is a fair point. So one thing, when new businesses do come in and they require infrastructure upgrades, they pay the full cost of the infrastructure upgrades right up front. As far as their load goes, on their energy consumption, they do pay a demand portion, which covers the capacity on the line that they're taking up. So if a customer, a cannabis company that's using much higher load, they're paying a higher amount every month for that additional capacity that they're using.
The other thing, too, is you actually brought up EVs, so people who do not use EVs, they will not be using all the energy, too. And I think that if you look at the, I don't think people who are using the bus should have to cover the cost for the extra load for the people who are using EVs. I don't know if it's possible to go down that small, but. Yeah, and I guess I'm interested, the other question I had is, is there, is there, I guess in California, they had a bunch of fires, is that an issue here in our area if the trees fall down? I mean, is that, do we have that? It was blamed on the utilities, that they had all these fires that began. I'm curious if that can happen here.
So the issues they had in California are completely different than what we would see here. Those were on their transmission systems, which typically are operating at 345,000 volts, so they're running at a higher temperature and much higher voltage. You're in an area where you're in the forest, it's very dry out in California, they don't have as much rain or water right now, so that is also contributing to that. And that's one of the reasons, as we mentioned, our primary focus has been to relocate the higher voltage lines to the street and get those out of the backyards where predominantly they're surrounded by trees.
Okay, all right.
Oh, hi, I'm Anna DeKeever, and I live on 72 Congress Avenue, so I'm not, not in this area that's being discussed this evening, but I was curious, so someone just stepped up and said that there, that you had moved some lines from the backyard to the streets where there was no poles and now there are poles, was it Princeton Street did the, did you answer that question?
So last year, we did go through the city council to get a poll petition, correct.
Okay, great, that's cool.
But there was already some polls adjacent there, yes.
Great, thank you. And so the $3 million, well, just, I have a bad memory, and I have some problems with word finding, so if I get stuck, that's, I'm having a problem. But like, so the $3 million that you guys are saying that this would cost, that would increase costs to consumers by 75%, what line on the bill would that 75% be in? I don't, not very clever, I don't, you know, you're saying it would be, it would cause a 75% increase, where on the bill would one find that, like what line on the bill? Right, if you're saying it would cause, so if my, if my electric bill is going to be 75%?
So that would be on the distribution charge.
On the distribution, so, so from the inception of the project, every month until 30 years out, there would be a 75% increase on the, and what is, what is, what is that line usually?
Correct, and then at the end of the 30 years, we're nearing the end of the life for the underground system, and the wires would then need to be replaced again.
Okay.
So it's not like we would just then be able to decrease the rate 75%.
Yeah, clarified question only. And, you know, curious, why do, why are overhead lines, why do they have a longer lifespan than under, underground lines?
It's primarily due to the insulation that has to be put on an underground system. The underground systems also don't have, you're in an enclosed area in the conduits, so they don't have the heat dissipation, so the insulation does degrade over time.
Yeah, all right, that's, and again, just questions. So I did a little bit of looking into municipal light governance recently, much to my, I made my own spreadsheet, much to my chagrin, I saw Belmont did it for me because they switched from an appointed board to an elected board, and across the board in general, most of the municipalities have elected boards, whereas we have a mayor-appointed board. I'm a big fan of democracy, as a super poor person who's not very clever, I don't think I'm going to be ever elected to the board, but in my personal opinion, I think where the people are appointed to things through a democratic process, where all of the community has the opportunity to vote on that, is a, is a better form of government. Also, also, it would be all you and Ward Seven, it won't be me, but, you know, but still, democracy. But, you know, and along that line, when I looked at all these municipal websites, a lot of them use the language, "The people own this company." And your language on your website is a little light on that, do you know? Like, I was really impressed, where, and maybe it's just PR, but on many of the municipal websites, it said, "The people," as an entity owned by the people, over and over and over again. And I wonder, is that not the truth here? And are we different from the other municipal life sources, or do I own the light company? I own the light company? No.
You own the light company.
And these guys own the light company? All right, great. So as a renter, I was wondering, I know that you guys do like an outsourcing thing for the, for the, like the color to the Mass Saves program, and for renters, there's not really much on there. Like, I would feel good if I got a cheap light bulb, right? If you, if you could, and I know you're not doing it, you're sending out to like a third party, so, but right now, I think all that's there for someone in my income level and circumstances would be to get a power strip, which, you know, I'm down for, but, you know, because we, we pay, as a renter, I pay for electricity, but the, the stuff that's similar to Mass Saves is mostly for homeowners who are purchasing their own, or have the capability to purchase, you know, the money, and to purchase their own, like, refrigerators and the mini-split, which I'm not doing, my landlord might like it if I did that, but I, you know what I mean, like, I'm not doing that to my home. But where, you know, where, where could there be equity in that? Because I, I know a little bit of my electric bill goes to that program. I did sign up for, I'm very impressed, and I don't think you, like, I was aware of this, but you, Holyoke Gas Electric talks to some of the buildings in the city, right? And when there's peak demand, is it some of the school buildings, there's peak demand that you tell the school building that there's peak demand, and then they reduce the amount of electricity they use? I've read that on your website, is that, did I understand that?
Correct.
Well, you know, I, I, as a, as a renter, I entered, there is a way for me to enter that sort of program, it's a little glitchy, they tell me when there's peak use, but it tells me it's going to be zero hours every single time, so there's a glitch in that system. And so, I mean, and this is my last question, I'll, I'll leave. So I have been sitting at home thinking, how cost prohibitive would it be if, if your energy audit program was an opt-out rather than an opt-in? And would that be valuable? So instead of my reluctant friend who owns a home, has to call you to have you come in and look at our house to do an energy audit, if the standard was every single home, within reason, over a 30-year, you know, how, you start in one neighborhood, and you just, you call them and say you're going to have an energy audit in this day, and if they don't want it to happen, you know, or they could negotiate with you the time that they come in, but if they don't want it to happen, then they can opt out. But, you know, I think that's what the Green New Deal is going to be eventually, that's what is going to happen, but do you have any ideas or thoughts about that?
No, it's, it's a good thought to, you know, try to get more people interested in doing energy audits, but if they're reluctant participants, you know, you're going to spend the money to do the audit and not have any follow-up. So, and then the whole customer base has to pick up the cost for all those audits that are sitting on the shelf.
Hi, I'm Tom Reenie, I live at 24 Princeton Street, the street that has been referred to not by name, but in terms like ugly and awful in our meeting here this evening. That's the, that's what has happened on Princeton Street, a relatively short block in the past 12 to 15 months, with the felling of trees last year on the south side, the felling of trees on the north side a month or so ago, and the movement of utility poles out to the tree, tree bank. I'm a little bit dismayed just to have overheard that the city council approved the placement of the utility poles on Princeton a year or so ago? That you went to the council for that?
Yes, we received approval for, we put in a poll petition request to put some poles.
I would love to have known that, through my councillor, through city representatives. That came as complete news to me about five minutes ago.
It's news to me, too. News to me, too.
Pardon me?
I said, "News to me, too."
And, and I'm sure there would have been a very vigorous neighborhood turnout and opposition to that petition. But, but before, I think that what would have been helpful, because this is all in retrospect now, because we were uninformed largely of what has happened in the last 15 months or so, it would have been really useful to know what the parameters were for underground service for our street, and the willingness that many of us may have had, or may still have on that block, to go underground and to shoulder at least some of the cost. We, I mean, there's just been no contact, relatively speaking, around this for the residents of Princeton Street. Now, in addition to the ugly and awful adjectives that were used to describe what's happened there in the past 15 months, just before I came over, I ran into a couple of neighbors, they were out for their evening walk, and they said, "You know, we walk down Pleasant and we look down Princeton, and it just looks awful." You know, they do it every single night. And I walk down Pleasant virtually every day, and I'm curious as to why it is that I walk by a number of houses that don't appear to have anything but underground service going into them? And I heard you mention a number of newer projects in the city, or rehab projects, Lyman Street, for instance, where, of course, you're going underground now, but how is it that there are select stretches of some neighborhoods in which there are no evident utility poles? They're right around the corner from where I live. And, and can you answer that? And in addition to that, could you answer, what would it take for me, for instance, to just get underground for my house? Because I also know people who have requested that for their one residence, not for a block, not for a community, just for themselves, and they have been successful in that. So it might be useful to other people in this room to know what it is that I would undertake to petition for that kind of thing through HG&E. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, as mentioned earlier, when we do, when we are working as part of a state project, we do get additional funds to cover the cost for the infrastructure that gets put in, and that's why in certain areas, Lyman Street, Commercial Street, sections of Pleasant Street, we were able to go underground. As far as if at your house you would like to go underground, all we would require is that a trench be provided, and then we would put the conduits and the wire up to the house.
And you would provide a trench, would that be fine?
That's what, yes, so that's what the residents who do put in underground service, they provide the trench.
Go right ahead, have that one last question.
Thank you. When we met three weeks ago, I voiced my dismay that you weren't here for that meeting. I think most of us anticipated we were coming to a meeting that would have DPW, City Hall, and HG&E. You're here this evening, I don't see DPW.
Well, they just arrived, well, the city engineer just arrived recently.
Uh, great, because what I think we would like to also know on Princeton Street is, what is the timeline for the replacement of trees? Many, many trees were felled in the past 15 months, what is that timeline like? I met people just this weekend who put their own trees in the tree belt. I said, "Ooh, that's a no-no," I thought, you know? But, you know, I'd love to do that if I could get away with it, because we want some trees. And, and property values, of course, are, are an issue when it comes to the loss of trees and the utility poles moved out front and all the rest, you understand? Thank you.
Thank you, I would like to take a second probably to recognize a city engineer, Bob Parent, give him a second to update us on some of the stuff that we spoke about the last, at the last meeting, that way he can answer some of the questions, here, there, whichever one's more comfortable for you. I'm sorry.
My apologies, I thought the meeting was at 6:30 tonight, since I didn't get the original invite. Where we stand, we have about week and a half, two weeks' worth of work left on Brown Avenue, if you've been down Brown Ave lately. The sidewalks have been installed entirely on one side of the street, and we're probably a third to halfway down the other side of the street. After that, the plan was to move to Princeton, and I'll explain why we wanted to come to Princeton first, was we wanted to be able to get the new trees in as early in the season as we could. It's not a very good idea to be planting trees in July and August, so we wanted to be able to go right from, from Brown Ave to Princeton, get the sidewalks constructed, get the trees installed, and then move on to other streets. We have tagged the trees at the nursery in Connecticut right now, so we know what trees we own, we know what trees are going to be installed, you know, we've picked the most viable trees that meet the two-and-a-half-inch threshold that we've specified and what the city forester has recommended, with larger trees, actually, the viability of the trees not being as good as a mid-sized tree, not a stick, but two-and-a-half inches thick basically at chest level, or two-and-a-half inches in diameter at chest level is the ideal size that the, the city foresters recommended. So we're about two weeks away from coming to Princeton. I know that at least one resident on Princeton Street has put out, should we replace all the sidewalks on Princeton Street? And we're certainly willing to have a dialogue with the folks that live on Princeton Street, working with the city councillor who had filed the original order to place Princeton Street on the list, and working with the mayor, that if there is a desire amongst the residents on the street not to do the entirety of the street, you know, we will adjust our plans. But right now, DPW is moving ahead with a charge that was given to us last year, which was to build new sidewalks on Princeton Street. So in brief, that's where things stand today.
Thank you, Bob. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Matt Shenniard, 20 Fairfield Avenue. I live in the corner of Fairfield and Nanituck. My power comes from between Pearl and Nanituck, on the back side of it. When we had a aerial trespass from our neighbor on Fairfield, we had to have the line changed. So they originally wanted to put a pole in my yard in order to accommodate me for power. That was definitely unacceptable. The compromise was, they put a pole in next to my carriage house, between my property and my neighbors, and ran the line there. And when we did the driveway over, we buried our lines. Now, my question is, if those poles are owned by Verizon, who is overseeing their placement of the poles? I mean, if they decide to put a new pole on Nanituck, and I've already dug my lines and had them buried, who's going to make sure that they don't, they adhere to what's there already, versus running overhead lines again?
So as part of the work that we're doing, where there's some poles that need to be replaced, we send our crew out at the same time when they set the new pole, and we transfer some of our facilities at the same time. So we're there at the same time.
But does that leave Verizon the capability of putting lines and poles on Nanituck versus trying to replace the poles in the back? Good question.
Well, when they replace the pole, it has to go in the vicinity of where the other one was, within a foot. So it's not like we have latitude to move the pole 10, 20 feet away from the existing pole.
No, but can Verizon do that without having to consolidate with you?
If, if they're putting a brand-new pole and it's not adjacent to where the new pole is, they would have to go through a poll petition request, which would go through the city council.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you come up again, I would like to recognize Sharon Siddique online. Jeff, are you...okay. Go ahead.
I don't support cutting down the forest in Western Mass. Actually, there's a very high percentage of asthma here in Western Mass. And these trees help...yes, asthma rates are climbing as well as medically, human health-wise, this would be very expensive to lose these oxygen-generating trees. Some of these trees are over 100 years old. As far as this meeting goes, I haven't seen one picture of what trees they are planning to cut down and how old some of these trees are.
Sharon, just for process and procedure, can you give us your address?
Yes, 1784 North Hampton Street, Holyoke, Mass.
Thank you. And was that all? Or do you guys have any pictures of where the pictures... No, that's actually the city. I think the trees were already cut, right? I think Bob Parent left already. So with regards to the trees, I believe they have already been cut and the ones that they're replacing, I don't know what they look like right now at the moment, but I believe I can possibly ask the city engineer to provide us with some pictures. And if you reach out via email, I can forward them to you.
So as exactly how many trees were already cut? And I don't think there's been an exact number said.
That, at the moment, I can't share with you because I don't know exactly what amount of trees have been cut. But I can get that for you too as well within that same email from the city engineer.
Yeah, I think it's really important at this meeting that everybody in the community knows exactly how many trees are getting cut. You know, just sending it out to me may not be the best decision because I feel like all the residents should know since we're all living in the town. Over the last 50 years, they have cut trees for the railroad here in Holyoke
I wholeheartedly agree, Sharon. Wholeheartedly agree.
And many developmental projects as well.
Mister... The city engineer just walked in and I believe he can answer your question now.
Sorry, I missed the first part of your question.
Um, she's online, actually. So she can't hear you unless you speak into the microphone. I'm sorry.
Hello, Bob Parent here, city engineer. I apologize. I missed the first part of your question that might be directed at me.
So the question, if I'm correct, is how many trees are going to be cut down or how many have been cut down already? And what kind of trees are we replacing the trees with in the future or whenever we do replace them?
I have some of that information. We cut down 30 trees in total between Brown Avenue. And Brown Avenue by far had the most number of trees coming down on one street. And the rest of the trees were scattered amongst the various other streets that are involved, Jefferson, Vadnaze, George, Princeton. I may have left out a street, obviously Princeton. There will be no more trees cut down as part of the sidewalk project. All the trees that are necessary to build a sidewalk at the ADA compliant 5-foot width have been taken down at this point. The species of the trees, I can't specify offhand. We're working off of with the direction of the city forester. Mass DCR has a list of recommended tree species that we're working with right now. And it's actually a recommended list of tree species based on whether or not there are utility lines in place or not in place. So on some of these streets, many of the streets up in the Highlands area don't have overhead utility lines that parallel the street. Brown Avenue, definitely there is on one side of the street. So we want to plant lower, shorter trees that will have less need to be pruned in the future as opposed to some of the larger tree species that are going to grow up and in order to maintain the electric lines will have to be heavily pruned in the future. So we're trying to fit the size of the tree to the size of the opportunity. Again, working off the Mass DCR list of recommended street tree species. I can get that list and provide it. I just don't have the names off the top of my head.
Thank you.
So they're native trees that you're planting? And you said they cut down 30 trees so far? 30? Is that what you said?
Yes, 3-0 are the ones that have been cut down and there'll be no more trees cut down as part of the project. They were all done for good or bad very quickly at the very beginning of the project. And yes, all the Mass DCR-recommended, Department of Conservation and Recreation-recommended species are all native species. There's no invasives, there's no imports on that list.
Yeah, so, you know, I walked through the Highland Park area and it is ugly. I do agree with the other residents that it's ruining the town. Holyoke in general has one of the highest crime rates in Massachusetts. And mental health is also going to be on the rise. This project is going to be far more expensive. People are going to need more medical care more because these trees are protecting the health of the residents. It provides shade, it provides oxygen, and homes for endangered wildlife. So I hope you do not do this again and inform the residents so we can actually have a say. Also in this meeting, there was a 5:30 meeting about the demolition of historical buildings on Appleton that no one here present could attend because that meeting was also scheduled in Holyoke at 5:30. So it was either come to this meeting about the destruction of the trees or go to the destruction of the historical building. You cannot attend both. And both of those were at the same time today at 5:30. So no one here was able to be present at the 5:30 demolition project to talk about the historical buildings that are being torn down on Appleton Street in Holyoke. So I don't know why they had two different meetings because the public can't attend both of them at 5:30 PM today. And I wanted to attend that meeting as well.
Thank you. With regards to the meeting, I think the historical commission plans their own meetings, right? Separately from the city council, if that's correct, right? So sorry for the mishap with regards to scheduling both at the same time.
Yeah, so those buildings are going to be demolished without anyone ever knowing or saying because, you know, that's not right that they had that meeting at the same time. So they're destroying the trees and they're destroying the historical buildings. Some of these trees are over 100 years old. And this building that they're destroying on Appleton Street is also over 100 years old. And there needs to be more coordination between these two people, these two programs, so people can attend the meetings. Because we can't attend both at 5:30 PM on the same exact day.
Thank you.
So please look into that because that's not right.
Will do.
Oh, are they going to leave the stumps for the trees? Are they leaving the stumps at least?
I think they shredded the trees all the way down to the roots. At least on Brown Ave by where I live, I saw them all get shredded down. Go ahead, Bob.
Why couldn't they leave the stumps for the trees at least?
Because I'm assuming they're going to plant where the stumps are, the new trees. But Bob's parent is here again to answer the question.
Back again, yes, we have ground down all the stumps, which in general, most people, we have a lot of stumps and a lot of trees have been cut down in the city where the stumps haven't been removed.
Right.
So it's generally what people prefer, that the stumps aren't just left there at the side of the roadway. But in this particular case, they've been ground down to be able to make room for the new trees to be planted in their place.
They also prevent flooding. Holyoke is going to flood now. It's in a flood plain right on the river.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Parent, and thank you, Sharon. Can we move on to the next person that has public comment?
Richard Purcell, 279 Suffolk Street. Former homeowner, I'm a renter now. My question's, I agree with everything that everybody said. I'm a professional unpaid tree hugger. And some of the questions I have are directly to HG&E. Went to your website and it says you're 5.3% from being carbon neutral for our energy needs. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that's been since 2010 when we became a green community. Is that correct?
That's incorrect. It changes yearly depending on the power output for the dam and our other energy that we purchase.
So how long have we been 5.3% short of being carbon neutral for our energy needs?
No, that's our 20...in 2021, we were roughly 95%. The year before that, we were 82%. So like I said, it changes depending on the output from various generation units.
So next year it could be 2%?
I wouldn't say it's going to go...it would go that low.
The reason I'm asking is because why don't we get to carbon neutral? Why don't we get to carbon neutral? You're this close to making us a carbon-neutral city. And now I said I was a renter. The next question is, why not have net metering so that we can put solar panels on the roofs of the apartment buildings? Why don't we have net metering to offset the cost of all the money that you guys are throwing around tonight with 300 million for blah, 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 blah? And in communities, they have net metering and that helps. The entire community then helps us get to carbon neutral. That's another question. Before you answer all the rest, I just want to... I trashed John's sheet out here. The new batteries, the new batteries that they're going to have to store energy, are they going to be the energy from the dam?
No.
Why not?
It doesn't make sense to connect them to the dam right now.
So where are the batteries going to go? We already have them at the former Mount...thank God, former Mount Tom Coal Plant. Where are the batteries going to be storing electricity from?
What batteries are you talking about?
The new batteries, they just came out from the company from New York.
Yeah, because that's...
So NG owns the former Mount Tom Coal Plant. They own the solar field there. You own the poles. And we get the battery storage at peak and we save them in those batteries. The company from New York that's coming to Holyoke now is going to have more batteries. It was just big news, like a couple of weeks ago.
Right.
Where are those batteries going to go?
They're going to get connected to the distribution system. And they're not...the batteries are not going to be owned by Holyoke Gas and Electric.
I know that, but the cost is going to save us during peak. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And how do we get to carbon neutral with that? Will that help us?
Well, the state has a plan, a requirement now in law.
I don't want to hear 2050 because we're at 5.3% now. I don't want to wait till 2050 to get to the point we need to get.
We could get to net zero just by going out and purchasing credits, but everybody has to pay for that. And I think people are not really in the mood to get increased rates right now with everybody, all the other prices increasing at the same time. So we're on a path, we're ahead of most, ahead of just about everybody from a carbon intensity standpoint or for carbon-free standpoint. But we're going to get there according to the state's plan. In fact, we're well ahead of the state's plan right now.
But you don't have to if you don't want to get to... You can wait till 2050, right?
We can. The state's...we have to follow...
What incentive can we give you to do it?
Go tell me everybody here wants to pay more in their energy bill every month. You know, and we do, to correct you, we do have net metering for solar facilities.
For solar facilities, not for residents?
Yes, we do.
I heard we didn't. We're not paying...we're not getting one for one.
I didn't say we're getting...I said we have a net metering rate.
Here's your electric man. He'll answer. He knows. I think I even talked to you about it before. Why don't we get one for one, net metering?
Again, because if a customer who owns a solar facility is getting a full net meter, their neighbors are paying for that. And not everybody can afford a solar panel. So we have probably the fairest net metering rate going right now.
Okay, that's your answer. And like...and so you and I met with the mayor and neighbor to neighbor and in the mayor's office, former mayor's office, Alex Morris's office. And back then, one of the questions I asked you is, it was about Columbia Gas and the gas moratorium. We have a gas moratorium still. Columbia Gas tried to blow up half of Massachusetts. I'm exaggerating, but they did. Blow up a lot of things. Are we in bed with EverSource now because Columbia Gas got out?
Hey, Rich, just for a second. I just...I'm getting a little nervous now, right?
No, I'm fine.
No, 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 I know. I know you're fine, everything's cool, but it's just... Let's just try to, like, respect each other's space.
I am. I'm trying.
Oh, that's all I'm saying because...
Are we in bed with EverSource?
I kind of feel like they're being attacked to a certain extent. And I get it, a lot of people are upset and there's feelings and emotions in the air. But I'm trying to keep it...
Okay.
A neutral space for everyone.
I understand.
All right.
I understand. Are we?
No.
Thank you. So that...when will the gas moratorium end?
I don't know.
And my last question. The city council said no to the Barr Foundation grant. Why didn't HG&E...I'm trying to say this not loud like Izzy said. Why didn't HG&E vigorously, vigorously pursue that grant? It would have helped us. It wouldn't have hurt us. That's it. Thank you.
Hi, John Epstein, 52 Harvard Street. I had like 34 pages of comments and questions. You'll be glad to know it's down to 32. But seriously...
I'm supposed to take my daughters for ice cream after this.
Sorry, Izzy.
No.
All right. You know, the issue that... The overriding issue I think that we're facing here is that people are concerned about the quality of life in the city. They're concerned about their neighborhoods. They're concerned about the property values. Aesthetics do matter. And there's no bigger investment that the vast majority of people have than the homes that they've purchased. And, you know, people buy into certain neighborhoods. They buy into certain cities. They buy into certain complexes in large part because of the characteristics of that street, that neighborhood, or that city. And part of what is happening right now, and Jim and I have talked about this on a couple of occasions, is that the HG&E is contributing to a change in the characteristics of some of our neighborhoods. You know, this city, 100, 150 years ago, or parts of this city, I should clarify, were when they were built, when these homes were built in the Highlands and Laurel Park and the tree streets, they were built with the utilities and the services all coming from the rear of their homes. And they were built that way for a reason. They were built that way because the aesthetics were important. How things looked were important. Because that affected their lives. That affected the things that mattered to them. And so that affected their investments. So there are changes taking place right now and so you end up with meetings like this. And people see changes for the worse in some places and they see changes for the better in other places. Jim, not to pick on you, but...and I don't, seriously, I don't mean to. But, you know, you, living where you do on North Pleasant Street, that's a wonderful stretch of area, wonderful stretch of homes. And it's one of the more desirable places to live, certainly in the city of Holyoke. You know, the lines, I understand, were coming in from the back, you know, in your neighborhood and eventually got changed to underground. Now, you would explain to me that part of that was due to the fact that the state, I believe it was, was redoing part of the road. And so the HG&E took advantage of doing that and ran the lines underground. But a few minutes ago, you know, Steve was talking about, you know, the reliability and serviceability of lines. We were talking about backyard lines. We're talking about front-street lines. We're talking about underground lines. And I think Steve had said that, from the sound of it, and I think, Jim, you might have said this to me as well at one point in time, that aerial lines are easier to service. So, you know, one obvious question, Jim, and I'm not really expecting an answer on this and forgive me if this is a bit unfair. But you could have made the decision on North Pleasant Street where you live to run those lines aerially. If that was in the best interest of the gas and electric, you could have made the decision to run those aerially because you're in a unique position to do that. But I don't blame you for wanting to do it underground because you wanted it underground for the same reason that we want our lines, if not underground, But I don't blame you for wanting to do it underground, cuz you wanted it underground for the same reason that we want our lines, if not underground, at least not in people's faces. You know, somebody was talking earlier about the, 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 the lines on the streets. I think, actually, Steve, you were talking about how they would be done. And there's the primary lines, which I think you said are the three tall lines at the highest elevation. And then there's the secondary lines, which I guess service the homes. So everybody has a copy of the flyer, I left some on the tables. If you look at the side that has three photographs on it and you look at the bottom photograph, you're gonna see what that looks like when the GNE takes those same utility poles where the three primary lines are at a very high elevation and add secondary lines and then run those to homes. And additionally, and Steve, you've been, one of the phrases that you've been using frequently this evening is "this year." There are no plans this year, this year we're not doing that. Well, what about next year? What about the year after that? What about five years down the road? You know, we all value having the gas and electric in town, even me, Jim, okay? And, you know, I wouldn't trade you guys out for anything else in the world. We are so fortunate to have you and have what you do. But I think you sometimes lose sight of what's meaningful to homeowners, to citizens in this city. And set that aside in terms of what's easiest, most convenient, and perhaps even cheapest for the gas and electric. Unfortunately, when there's a contradiction between those, it's the homeowners, it's the citizens that end up suffering from that. And I don't think the GNE is really taking us into account. You know, I don't think there's anybody in this room that isn't grateful that we have a municipally-owned gas and electric. I mean, you know, no one is unhappy about that. But some of these decisions are hurting us. And I don't think you're looking at it from that viewpoint. And it shouldn't be happening. So there's part one. Now, I'm just touching on a couple of other things. I mean, that's the gist of it. You know, you talked about reliability and that being one of the reasons that you wanna move the lines to the streets. I get it. And I know you have to upgrade the service. I realize that EVs, electric vehicles, you know, are becoming prevalent. And I know that down the road, 10 years, 20 years, whatever it happens to be, there's gonna be a much bigger draw on the grid. And so you have to accommodate that. You know, that's easy to explain, most people get it. Most people want you to upgrade and be prepared for that. But the question is, how do you go about doing it? And, you know, my whole thing is, there are solutions that get the city what it needs, that get the GNE what it needs and that gets homeowners and citizens what they need. But I don't think all of those are being considered at this point in time. You know, I mentioned a minute ago, I tend to go off on tangents, I apologize, feel free to reel me in, Izzy. But you're talking about reliability and one of, this is one of the reasons that you're doing this. But on the other hand, on your website, you're touting that the Hoyoke Gas and Electric is in the top 98% of reliability, in the top, top 2% across the entire nation of municipally-owned electric companies. That's phenomenal. Don't hurt us to get to 99. You know, 98% is good. Steve, you look like you wanna respond to that.
No, all I'm gonna say is, the moving the primary wires, upgrading the primary wires, that's been a 20-year project. So that's why you're seeing some of these high reliability rates.
Yes, but I think the GNE is, well, I'm not going back 20 years, but looking back at some of your annual reports online, you've had a very high reliability for a long period of time and are touting that. And that's great.
I mean, I can...
We all benefit from that.
I can comment from where I grew up in West Hoyoke. Every time there was a storm, we lost power for six hours.
I'm not sure what that, yeah, I'm not sure what the significance of that is, other than the people who are affected. You know, when there's a storm, everybody's gonna lose power. But because you're in the top 2% of the country, we fare better than 98% of the customers of municipal electric companies. That's essentially what that's saying. So when these lines get moved from backyards, you're not obviously digging up underground lines to pull them up and make them aerial lines. When these lines get moved from backyards to the street and you're doing it for reliability purposes and access and whatever you do. Then, and this is a lot of what, a lot of the comments that have been, that have been coming back and forth tonight are about trees. Because when they're in the backyards, yeah, there is an issue with trees in the backyards and access and trimming and things like that. But people, again, the way most of these houses were built, you know, prior to 1940, they all had the services going in the back because aesthetics mattered and they had trees in the front. So now when you're taking all the power lines and ultimately when the power lines move, so will the cable lines, so will Verizon's line. And if you guys, you know, God willing, end up deciding to do broadband, there'll be broadband lines coming off these poles in the front yards at the secondary level or lower, going back and forth to people's houses. So you can have two to four lines coming off these poles on the street going to people's homes, crisscrossing all over the place. And again, that photograph that's on this flyer is a perfect example of that. That photograph is Pleasant Street and if I'm not mistaken, most of those connections or most of those changes have taken place in the past couple of years. And neighbors and residents and homeowners in those areas are livid about it and understandably so. Because you can't recover from that look. That will never look like North Pleasant Street. Homes, there's a beautiful home on Pleasant Street on the far other side of the dingle, on the left-hand side as you're going towards Lincoln Street. And it's as nice as any home on North Pleasant Street and it's worth far less because of where it is. And I'm not saying it's just the lines, but the lines have ended up hurting the value of that property as well. So, and that relates to the trees and, you know, the, this is a related but slightly separate issue. The GNE's policy, and this is probably the very first conversation I had with Jim a few years ago. The GNE's policy of tree trimming, according to their guidelines, is left to right, 16 feet across and top to bottom, 25 feet. Eight feet left, eight feet right, that's 16 feet, 10 feet below the lines and 25 above. That's why, again, look at the flyer, that's why you've got trees that look the way some of those trees do. And again, so that goes back to aesthetics, it goes back to property values, it goes back to, you know, people's largest investment and what they care about. People do care about the neighborhoods that they live in. And you can go to any town, you know, or any neighborhood in this town. And again, you look at the areas, the streets that are most desirable and that overall sell for the highest prices, you're not gonna see lines out in front of the street going back and forth. They don't have to be underground, but you're not gonna see them out in the street in obvious places. So that's a concern. I know I've got more. Don't lose faith. Thanks, Rich. So, we already know that underground service is desirable. We know it's expensive and we know it's costly. You guys talked about a $300 million expense to run the whole city underground. It's a lot of money, there's no question. And, well, here's where I'm gonna get a little nasty, I suppose. It's a good thing Izzy left. I saw you look for him. But you're talking about the increase in cost that you'd have to pass along if you run lines underground. So, did you increase everybody's rates, Jim, when you ran your lines underground? Did you increase rates when you ran...
John, as I said 100 times to you, that job was a state-run job.
Okay.
And Verizon, Comcast, so there wasn't an impact and that's why we were able to do that one. Because the state paid for that.
Okay, but again, you chose underground as opposed to aerial, even though according to Steve, aerial is a better solution for the GNE.
We always choose underground when it's viable and that was no exception.
Okay, okay. How about Radcliffe Street where your brother-in-law lives? How about Valley Heights, which was just done about a year or two ago? Izzy?
Yeah.
I'm trying to point out...
I know what you're trying to do and I respect it.
Inconsistencies...
I get it.
Indecisions.
I just, I don't want it to get a little personal. That's the only thing for me.
Too late for that.
But I...
Fair enough.
I respect what you're trying to do.
Okay.
And I'm weighted 110%.
You're right.
As a community organizer at heart, I totally get where you're getting at and what you're trying, I respect it. But my, just out of respect feature, try not to make it personal.
I get it. And Jim, I apologize. All right. But there are locations, there are streets where you've run it underground and have you raised the rates as a result of those?
I just told you, John, when we manage it the way we've managed it and we can get the offsets from the state and the other utilities, it doesn't impact the rates.
Right, I know, I understand that. Did you get that for Valley Heights? Did you get that for Radcliffe or other places that you ran underground?
We follow the same rules of thumb for all installations.
Yeah, but that doesn't answer the question. You know, because you guys had said earlier, if you run it underground, we've gotta raise your rates. But you've run underground. And so my question is, I think we're entitled to know, did you raise the rates because of the places you did run it underground? Obviously, other people wanna know that too.
We had no rate increases this year, John.
Okay.
Valley Heights was done last year, there was no rate increase this year.
Okay, well, come on. So did you raise rates last year because of Valley Heights, for example?
No. Valley Heights was decided later in the year last year.
But the timing doesn't matter, you understand the point I'm trying to make, Steve.
But the point is, the project got done, we were able to get other utilities to join in and going underground on that street, which helped to offset some of the costs.
Great, so why don't we do that everywhere where you need to bring the lines forward? Or out of the backyards where you guys are saying you're having difficulty doing it? I don't, I mean frankly, I mean, I do and I don't. Understand why, I know you're upgrading the service, why don't you just run the new lines in the backyards where the old lines were? And even at that point, run them underground. If you've got, if you've got poles going in the back and you've got eight houses on one street, eight houses on the other street that are served by that, by that line in the back, that's the main line or what you would call the secondary line. And 16 lines off, bury the 16 lines, leave the one and the only one you end up having to worry about is the secondary line that feeds them. I mean, it's just a, it's just a wild card suggestion or solution. And this is what I'm saying, there are, I believe, other ways to deal with this that satisfies the HG&E's need without hurting homeowners. And that was the purpose of bringing that up. The other thing is, I think it was Tom Randy who was talking, I think he's left, but he was talking earlier about people being able to run their service underground and paying whatever the, whatever the cost is to do that. And that's great for people who can afford to do it, I can afford to do it, some people in this room can afford to do it, but lots of them can't. And when we're talking about aesthetics, when we're talking about the character of the neighborhood or quality of life. It's in streets or neighborhoods, but specifically we've been talking streets. You can't just run half the lines underground and leave the others aerial from the street. Because that doesn't accomplish anything in terms of preserving the character of the neighborhood. So it kind of has to be an all or nothing thing. I don't presume to have a specific answer to that. Like I said, I'm happy to pay my share. Although I will bring up something that I've heard that the GNE is doing and I kinda get it. They're trying to incentivize homeowners to move their lines from the backyards to the front yards. And one of the ways that I'm told that you are doing it is by offering to upgrade at no charge services that people have in their houses. In other words, saving them thousands of dollars, upgrading them presumably from a, say, 100 or 150 amp service to a 200 amp service. At no cost to the homeowner. So, I mean, is that, is that accurate? Is what I've heard correct, that you're doing that in some cases?
You're not factually accurate, no. When we run a service line to a house, it's rated for 150 amps. So that's the service wire. If a service is relocated from the back to the front, because a customer requests it, we don't charge the customer for the replacement of the service line.
Right, but when you request it...
When we request it, we do not charge the customer for the replacement of the service line.
And are you offering to upgrade their, I may have the terminology wrong, but you're offering to upgrade their house service?
We do not, we do not pay for the infrastructure improvement in a house to upgrade their service. If a panel or a disconnect has to be added as we put the new switch because where the service is going may be in a different spot. We will run the disconnect, put the meter in, and then we will tie it from the meter back to their old service panel.
So you're not offering to upgrade, for example, a homeowner's 100 amp service to 150 amp service in exchange for them agreeing to run, change the wire from backyard to front yard, from backyard to street? Okay, okay, that's misinformation then, that I heard. I know, everybody in this room wants to make Hoyoke a more desirable place to live, you know? The mayor does, the city council does, all of us do, and I know the HG&E does too. The way this is being done, the effect it's having on the neighborhoods, it's doing the exact opposite. And I don't think that's right and I don't think that's fair. There are solutions to this. And you were also talking about a $300 million build-out. I learned something last week when I drove around town because I wanted to, and I didn't by any means go down all the streets. But I wanted to get a sense of where this was happening and what neighborhoods it affected. And I didn't learn until then that it is primarily the older neighborhoods that have the services coming in from the backyards. And I, you know, I understood that. I went up to some streets, you know, up off of Westfield Road and off of Homestead and I realized that those poles apparently have always been in the front yards. And I still think they're equally terrible there. But I don't think they're losing something like the rest of us are in the Highlands or in Laurel Park or on the Tree Streets or anywhere else that might be affected. They bought into those neighborhoods, those lines were probably always there. We bought into our neighborhoods and they weren't. And your 350 million or $300 million cost, I'm assuming that includes running the entire city underground. And I'm not saying, I don't wanna pit one street against another or one neighborhood against another, cuz I don't think that's right. But the thing is, you're coming in and changing the character of our neighborhoods, the existing character of our neighborhoods. There's gotta be better ways to do this. And I hope the city council and the mayor will actively engage in this. And maybe together we can find a solution that works for everybody, that accomplishes what the HG&E needs to accomplish. You know, that accomplishes what homeowners and citizens want to accomplish, which is to maintain the character and value of their homes and their neighborhoods. I absolutely believe that that is possible and if you guys will permit, I will come and annoy you and try to drive things in that direction. You too, Izzy. I didn't mean to leave you out of the annoyance part of it.
No, don't worry about it.
Thank you all for your patience.
Thank you. Counselor Cocaine Givner has a question.
So I've been listening, obviously, the whole time and I'm hearing a lot of the same concerns. I also just have a question. I did hear a comment from our reps from Hoyoke Gas and Electric that said that you always put wires underground whenever viable. And I wonder if that means that running underground wires for power is also the most efficient and cost-effective over time? And how, how you would come to make that, how do you come to the conclusion that it's, whenever, how do you decide it's the most viable for a neighborhood or a project? And why do you come to that conclusion when you do?
Okay, well typically an underground system costs five times as more to install than an overhead system. It lasts less time than an overhead system. If we can get all costs to be equal for the installation, we will go underground.
Okay, so...
That way it doesn't have an adverse effect on the rates.
And does that mean that it usually happens with a new build versus an old build or...
So if it's a new development being built, I think the last one was Michelle Lane off of Cherry Street. The developer bore all the costs for the infrastructure buildup there. And then obviously, if it costs him $250,000 for the electrical... And then obviously, if it costs him two hundred and fifty thousand for the electrical infrastructure, and he's got six houses, I'm sure each house was increased in what he sold them for.
All right, and also, I'm under the impression that there are sensors usually to help municipalities find any disruptions in service if the, if the wires are underground, so I was, um, I'm either misinformed or just not fully comprehending how any areas could put wires underground if there's no way to monitor that?
So there are line fault analyzers that are in the system. That's not always where the fault occurs. So, you know, we don't have them every five feet in an underground system, they may be every five hundred feet. So it will isolate it to, you know, maybe a five hundred foot or a thousand foot section. Then we have to go manhole to manhole. And when that occurs, it's not always within the manhole. Sometimes it's within the conduit system between two manholes. And that's where it leads to longer delays in restoring the service. Because until we can definitively find where the fault occurs in an underground system, we can't re-energize, because you can create further issues by re-energizing upon a fault.
Thanks for that, and just one last question. So my main concern with above-ground wires is inclement weather. I have experienced more inclement weather, even with just more windy seasons. When we do have snowstorms, you know, we can have a lot of damage to wires. I understand they're easier to fix if they're above ground. But I do wonder if over the long term, as our weather changes, if it doesn't make more sense to put wires underground? And so I'm wondering if you have any research with sourcing that's available to the public that really dives into some of the cost analysis of the costs incurred by fixing above-ground lines with certain types of seasons and weather versus what it would cost over time for underground maintenance? I think that would be of interest to the general public, and it's definitely of interest to me.
I know, I know there are studies that are out there. So typically, an overhead system, I think as I mentioned earlier, the frequency of disruptions are higher. An overhead system roughly on average is about eight times higher for frequencies. The duration for each fault on an overhead system is restored much quicker. On an underground system, the durations tend to be eight to ten times longer for restoration. So while you have less frequencies of event with underground system, when you add up the cumulative outages on an overhead system versus an underground system over time, you still end up with roughly the same duration.
But, and, and the same cost?
The costs tend to be higher on an underground system.
Thank you.
Sarah?
Can everybody hear me? Okay, so I'm Sarah Crone, I live in Ward Seven, and I just have two things to comment on, and mostly for the people in the back. There are two groups in the state that you might be interested in joining, and anyone can join, the staff of HG&E, the commissioners, the city councilors. The first one is, uh, it's called MLP Scorecard, and it's a conglomeration of all the forty-one cities that have municipal light plants in them. And their goal is to find ways that all, to score the different MLPs. In fact, HG&E, the last time I looked, was number three. And of course, we always have more work to do, but we're proud of that. But how to make all the municipal light plants greener in the way that they create energy. And also to, to make sure that, we're always talking about environmental justice when we do so. And in fact, there's going to be a panel on Zoom on May thirty-first with Logan Malek, who was one of the people who runs the, um, the Scorecard Group, and Jacqueline Velez will be there as well, talking about environmental justice. The main group that runs the MLP Scorecard is Climate Action Now, and they're all over the state. And if you'd like to be in touch with that group, you can email logan@masclimataction.net. And, uh, let's see. I think, I don't know if Sarah Greenleaf is here? She works with the Department of Conservation and Recreation, but she's in charge of getting new trees planted for free, or maybe not anymore, around the city. But one of the caveats about trees and the diameter of their, their trunks is that the more mature trees are the ones that absorb more carbon dioxide through their leaves than the smaller ones. So every time you cut down one large mature tree, it takes planting thirty more new trees to make up for the difference. But I hope that someday Sarah Greenleaf will be included in these conversations. And then the other group that is open to everybody, not just the MLP groups or cities, is a new group called Trees as a Public Good. So I think that's one of the things that John was talking about, although we differ in one sense, that the public good that trees do is that they, if you have them, they're going to make your neighborhood not be a heat island where, for instance, in our city, in the Highlands, one, last summer, our temperature up in the Highlands was about ten or seventeen degrees cooler than it was in the flats in some areas. Because they don't have any shelter by, from the shade of the big mature trees down there. So the trees for pub, as a public good are all about legislation and creating ordinances so that the big mature trees will not be cut down, and there will be rules for it. Cambridge has a fantastic new set of ordinances that protect trees. And, um, including over pruning by the utility companies, prune back so much that a tree will finally die. There are a bunch of trees up in the Highlands where I walk that have just died on the, the tree, treeways. I think that's, or treeways, that's the spot between the street and the sidewalks. So there, it's a group that, that I think eventually will come to city planners and environmental planners trying to discuss, can we do away with sidewalks, or can we put the sidewalks on the edge of the street so there's more room for the tree roots to grow? Because I think when you're planting the new trees, the young ones are trying to save the old ones, trying to get rid of concrete on either side is going to be an advantage. But that's certainly not my job, but I, these, these groups will be addressing how to save the old trees so they're there for perpetuity, and how to plant the new trees so that they never have to be cut down or, or moved in their lives. So the person in charge of that, her name is Melissa J. Brown, and she is part of Orma, Our Revolution Massachusetts, if anyone wants to be in touch with that. So I think that's all I have on my notes. If anybody has any questions, you can always be in touch with me, and everybody save the trees.
Thank you, Sarah.
Hi, my name is Cam. I live on one eight five five North Tannen Street, okay, across from the People's Bank.
Okay.
But I have some voice in this matter, because I have friends that live in, the neighborhood has been impacted by uninformed decision, I would say. And the reason I'm here is that I'm the one who needs the key to, the tree to be cut down and the new sidewalk. Okay, you went to the wrong street. I need, I need the light, the light, the, the electrical pole to be moved, okay? Because it's actually, it's right between the property line. So I'm the only one on North Tannen Street that have the light pole in the front of the door. It has to be between property line. Okay, that's, that's ugly, verification applied to everybody else but my house. That's the only house on North Tannen Street that had that problem. Okay, you can go look at it. And my tree is beech, okay, there are two of them. They don't shed until December. It need to be cut down, that, that actually came down almost twice. And took down, you know, electrical wire that go to the lawyer's house, twice already. It needs to be cut down. Okay, I have more issue than most of the people here, unknowingly. And the sidewalk thing is baffling me, right? You said you need five feet wide for the regulation. People's Bank just built a brand-new building. If you count it, it's only three feet wide. And that has the most traffic in the whole entire city. Why five feet do not apply to the People's Bank? I, I'd like to get an answer. The planner. Why is it only three feet? I went and I, I, I measured myself over the weekend, because you need five feet. This one is brand-new, it's three feet.
That is a good question.
Okay, the next, the next thing that kind of make me mad, when I go to my friend's house, you had, you had electrical, right? Go underground, and you have cable coming from the back on pole. What's the point of moving underground when you have, you know, elephant in the room, having a single wire coming from the back? Why not move everything underground? You cannot force utility company to help you? You know? I don't know, you go, you go take a look at it. I mean, I want this city to be beautiful, but, you know, it's, I think you're doing the opposite. Very inconsistent, so. And the last point I want to make is this, when I moved to this city fifteen years ago, the taxes were twenty-eight hundred dollars a year. This year, I paid fifty-eight hundred. Okay? The, remember sewer bill was thirty-eight dollars? Now it's eighty-something dollars. You force us to pay more, more than double. I did the math, if you want to move everything underground for the next twenty years, it's only costs us fifty-five dollars a month per household. That's actually still cheaper than all the taxes and, you know, the sewer rate that you just increased.
So that would include everybody's wires in the whole city underground?
That's what he said. Nineteen thousand dollars. No, actually, fifty-five dollars is for twenty thousand, it give you a thousand dollar more than what, what you asked for. That's per month. So six hundred dollars a year, right? My taxes already, you know what? Can pay for that, you know what? Just keep charging, I think we can afford it, if we want to make it beautiful. What's stopping you? Fifty dollars a month, I pay for. But first thing, please fix my house.
I respect that. Bob, you want to answer that question about the People's Bank sidewalk, if you can?
My answer is only that I'd be very surprised. And if the gentleman who just spoke wants to meet me there at seven o'clock tomorrow morning, I'll be there at seven o'clock tomorrow morning. That's where my day starts, and my day hasn't ended yet today.
Yeah, I know.
So if you'd like, you know, I'll meet you at seven o'clock tomorrow morning, we'll take a look at this. Okay.
Thank you for all you do, too, Bob.
Bill Welch, Martin Street. I guess after listening tonight, I need to reevaluate my life. Because I don't spend a lot of time looking up at the wires above my house. And I've been there sixty years, yeah. I do understand there is a provision in Massachusetts law that may have changed over the years that would allow a utility to tack on eighteen percent onto a monthly utility bill with the sole reason to be burying lines. I'm not expecting you to know that, if that's true or not, right now. For those people that really want their lines buried, you know, my neighborhood of Elmwood, Ellie's neighborhood, none of our lines are buried. I'm sure a lot of the people in this room have not driven over my street and said, you know, Bill's property would look really better if GNE buried his lines. Because even if the GNE buries them, Comcast and Verizon aren't going to. At least not without me or all of us picking up the bill. But if the GNE could make an arrangement with the various property owners to pick up one hundred percent of the cost to bury their utilities, I'm for it. But my understanding of a little bit of infrastructure is if you've got six houses on the street and houses two and four want to bury theirs, and one, three, and five don't, it doesn't work. Everybody in a neighborhood has to buy into it, because you're burying an infrastructure. And again, we're talking to the HG&E, fantastic company. I'll give some praises later to Jim. But the Verizon and Comcast are not going to simply say, yeah, it'd be nice to bury them, and we're going to do it on our dime. They aren't going to. Right now, and I think you guys can bear it out, there are construction projects all over Western Mass that they are, uh, one I'll point out, Damon Road. Yep, they're putting in new road, new poles up in North Hampton. The electric lines have been moved. The cable lines, the telephone lines, they're waiting because Verizon doesn't have the crews, Comcast doesn't have the crews. But I would honestly ask the people in this room, a year ago, before the HG&E started this project, how many of you really looked up and cared about your power lines?
I did. I was quiet on the phone, but I didn't want to look at wires.
Yeah, I, I, I would honestly question that, because it's, I, I don't look up at the lines. I have a life.
My name is Barbara Lissandry. I own a house on Vadnay Street.
Vadnay.
And I believe earlier in the evening, someone said no pole lines would be installed on streets that do not already have those pole lines. In the past two weeks, six or seven trees have been cut down. So my question is, why were they cut down if the pole lines are not being relocated?
That, that, that's a question for city engineer.
Yes, those trees were cut down to support the new sidewalk on Vadnay's. They had nothing to do with any work for HG&E.
Thank you. Great question.
Good evening, I'm Mike Rogers, I live on Francis Avenue. First of all, hats off to the GNE, they provide excellent service. We have some of the lowest rates, I have no friends that are out of state that pay double what we pay for electricity and for gas, and I'm very pleased. My question is a little bit offbeat for tonight's meeting, and that is, I know we're moving towards electrification of the whole country, as a matter of fact, and I'm wondering what the long-term outlook is for natural gas, especially in Holyoke. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mike. Well, as was mentioned earlier, we're, we still have a moratorium on natural gas service, because we don't have enough supply to meet demand on a peak day. Those, there's no pipelines on the radar that are coming into this area, so, you know, we have adequate gas today to serve the customers that are connected. Until we solve the supply constraint issue, the moratorium will have to remain in place.
Hi, I already spoke, Kirsten Beatty, one hundred and forty-ninth Central Park Drive. So I, I had a few things, like, I know the mass legislature is not considered to be transparent, And they don't, if you go on the website, it's hard to understand all the things that they're doing because of the way it's designed. So I'd like to say, when you look at the USA, we are seeing issues in terms of the honesty of the government we have, the transparency, the agencies, are they transparent? Are the people behind it transparent? Is everyone transparent? And so I think it's good to have the routines in place to make sure that these things are transparent. So if I go on the Holyoke website, it's really a pain to try to understand if there's any construction anywhere. Because you have to, you have to look at these PDFs. You have to open up the PDFs for the meetings.
I agree.
It's really annoying. I mean, who's going to do that? I don't even want to open a PDF. So I was just going to suggest that maybe for transparency, what would be really good would be if there was a place for construction in Holyoke on the website, which wasn't like that I had to go to the DPU or that I had to go to HG&E, but there was like a central location where you could see the place that construction is happening. So that there's a cheap option as opposed to putting the mailing out of those things.
That's a great idea.
Then the other thing that...
I have just a little suggestion on our website, which you would have to come to our website for. We have a dig safe. It's an automatically populated dig safe ticket system that's open to the public to see. So you can see what contractor is marking out the lines. And it's automatically populated when we receive dig safes. And it's for all the departments of the city that are marking out lines.
Really?
So that could potentially solve part of the challenge that you're facing when you're looking.
Yeah, so if they just put the link on the Holyoke website to that and an explanation, that would probably help clear it up. The other thing is, is I know that a lot of people would really like to have Holyoke Fiber Optic. And I'm going to say that I'm one of the few people that isn't interested in it. Because, as I understand it, when you put the fiber in the ground, then there are towers that come along and sprout from the fiber. And I don't want any more towers in Holyoke. We have a ton of towers. We have a ton of antennas. So I'm not really pro that. But what I would like to know is, as you're putting in these... As you're doing the new installations of the infrastructure, usually in the US, what they say is you only do the work the one time. What I haven't seen online is Holyoke Gas and Electric has poles, Verizon has poles. What I'd like to know is the locations that those antennas are at. I'd like to know who's putting them up. I'd like that information. I know if I drive down by the hospital, there's an antenna there on the utility pole. If I turn up to go to the vet's soldier's home, there's an antenna right there. I know if I drive over by the log cabin towards that direction, there's like three or four on the utility poles. And normally, historically, people have been opposed to cell towers. They've been connected with cancer. They've been connected with ADHD. They've been connected with reproductive harm. These are all things that are out there and there are court cases going on. And when you put those things on a utility pole, they're just as powerful, but they're right next to your home. And I understand that it's hard to block them. But as far as I know, there's no notification, there's no mapping, there's no information. And I think that should be out there. And so I am opposed to fiber optic for that reason. And I'm curious if, when you talk about being able to dig underground, I'm all for that because then it makes it much harder for them to put anything up on a utility pole. But I'm curious if, when you talk about being able to put it underground because other utilities are helping you sponsor it, I'm curious as to how you could try to increase those engagements and support for that from those other utilities, whoever they are. And I guess that's... I guess that's it. Thank you.
I mean, those antennas, all the areas you just referenced, those poles are owned by Verizon. So we would not get notification if an antenna is going on those poles. But if you want to reach out to Verizon, they should have more information.
Is there, like, you probably have that information too? Is it possible, I'm just curious, if it's possible for you to put that information online? I mean, that would be great. I don't know. I believe you have that information.
I can honestly tell you, I do not know who at Verizon makes that decision.
I guess what I could say is, from the city council, maybe I can file an order to have Verizon explain that and maybe be more transparent as to where they're putting their antennas and stuff throughout the community. So that way you can get that information that you're requesting.
Yeah, that would be great.
Hopefully, they can come in and have a meeting just like this, like HG&E did. I don't think that's going to be the case, but it would be great to at least get a response via email with identifying where the antennas are or whatnot. I get where you're coming from with regards to being transparent and knowing where things are, especially if they're just going to be popping them up wherever the case may be.
All right, great. Then I'd love to chat with you in the future too.
Thank you.
All right, great.
I would like to recognize Daniel online. Jeff, if it's possible?
Yeah, I'm here. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Daniel. If you could introduce yourself and address.
Doctor from St. James. Okay, so my concern is, you know, like most of the residents of the town. And that is basically that the trees being cut down is causing, you know, for the most part, the beauty of the town to disintegrate. And also the adverse health effects of cutting these trees down. One of the issues I have is, you know, as a historian, if you look at Holyoke's history, it's always been a very beautiful town that's had beautiful trees, beautiful historic buildings. And just over the course of many years, even decades, all of that is going, being demolished and being removed. And it's really taking Holyoke into a place where it's almost unrecognizable to its past. So I just want people, you know, everybody to stay very vigilant when it comes to all of these type of, I guess, endeavors by these companies. My question would be, is there any more trees that are going to be cut down for this project specifically?
No. To my understanding, there should be no more trees being cut down.
Is there any projects in queue coming up that would also cut trees down?
Mr. Parent? Any projects in the queue that would also cut trees down?
I'm just trying to take a moment to think because there are a lot of projects out there. Some that the city are directly involved in, some gas and electric are involved in, some the Holyoke Water Works are involved in. Of the projects that I know will be ongoing in the next year or two, because that's really kind of the timeframe that I'm looking at. There are water main projects going in on Magnolia in Portland. I do believe that there may need to be a couple of trees cut down as part of that because in a couple of cases, there are water services that run directly under the trees that need to be replaced. There's a water main project coming up on Dwight Street, on Hamden Street. I don't believe there's any trees impacted as a result of that. I'll let gas and electric speak on their own in terms of any projects that the city might be doing in the next year or two. I'm not aware of any. I will note, because I'm going to note the good things every now and then, as part of the South Holyoke Homes project that's undergoing right now, where we received a Mass Works infrastructure grant, we're planting about 60 trees, six zero trees, as part of that project. We are also then, we've been able to expand the scope of that project and head out towards South Canal Street and further out Clemente, further out Adams Street. We were walking the site last Friday, identifying locations for about another 20 to 30 trees that are going to be planted as part of that expanded project. So, you know, when the opportunities present themselves, we work pretty hard to create, particularly in South Holyoke, green space where there is not currently any green space, to try to restore a lot of those areas. So that's a longer answer than you asked. But in terms of any projects, our sidewalk projects are complete in terms of, or will be complete with the trees that have been cut down? And that's what comes to mind right at the moment.
I just want to touch on something that was one of the earlier guests spoke on, which was the structural, the historical building potentially being demolished and that being another meeting at the same exact time as this. And if I listen to everybody here, the core of their issue is the aesthetics, the beauty, which is drawing, you know, bringing the property values down. Well, you know, these historic buildings also are incredibly beautiful. You know, if you look back about 60, 70 years, they had the Kellamworth Castle that was destroyed to put up a few apartment buildings, you know? And that really took, gave the town a big hit when it came to property value. And so I just want, I think as the mayor, I think you should be, you know, set up proper meetings so that both issues could be heard by people that are concerned about both issues as both lead to the beauty of the town and the property values being decreased by removing these buildings and removing these trees. So I just want to see if, you know, if we could move forward and be positive and say, hey, you know, that is true. So let's have these meetings at different days at least.
I agree. 110%. And I guess I'll take the hit for that because I am not in communication with the Historical Commission because I'm the Chair of Public Safety. I don't think the Commission of Historic, or the Historical Commission, is a committee that the city council is technically a part of or in charge of. That is a commission that is assigned specifically by the mayor. Granted, we should all, as city departments and different leaders within the city, be on the same page. But I have to admit that I'm new to the council. Been here two months, three months on the job. And I'm working on trying to get all the communications on the same page, as well as a variety of other councillors. But in the future, I'll take that to note, and I will try to work harder on making sure that we don't have meetings on the same time. It's just that we wanted to make this meeting as immediate as possible because the last meeting, we had a lot of people that wanted to hear back from the city as soon as possible. This is the soonest date that we could do. This is the soonest time that the chair, I mean, that the committee could come together because it's a public safety committee. So we would need myself, Coco, and as well as Todd to be able to start the meeting, at least to my understanding. But yes, I have been hearing you. And in the future, we will work on communicating with the other commissions to make sure that we don't choose the same date and time so that everyone can make it to all the meetings. And I apologize for that again.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, this is Teal Materion dato. I'm from Fairfield Avenue. Is there a long-term plan by HG&E to try to get rid of all the poles that are in the backyard? And I mean like longer, longer plan in the next 30 years or at any point?
So on Fairfield, they have the poles in the backyard are owned by Verizon. So even if we moved to the street, let's say, and we went underground, for example, the poles would still remain in the background until Verizon or Comcast relocated their facilities.
Yeah, the question was not specifically to Fairfield, but just more in general. Like, all the poles that you own that are in the backyard, are you hoping to move them to the front at some point?
No.
Okay. Also, in terms of Fairfield, because Fairfield is a local historic district, poles cannot actually be moved in the front. So, yeah. So one way, by the way, for people, whether they don't want poles in the front, is to work to create a local historic district. That's a huge endeavor. Luckily, someone did it for Fairfield Avenue a few years ago. But that protects you from these and many other issues.
Thank you for that. I don't hear anybody. Oh, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Michael. I live on Madison Avenue. And so how does, this seems rather disjointed. You've got HG&E, you've got Comcast, and you've got Verizon, and everybody owns different poles. So is there any kind of overriding agency that decides who gets what? Or how did this all come about? It seems rather disjointed.
So the city is split 50-50 as far as pole ownership in the city. So at some point a long time ago, a line was just kind of drawn on a map. One facility, or one company took one area, and then the other company took the other side. It's not uncommon for what's done in other cities. If you didn't have that kind of agreement where one company owned one area or another, then various utilities would all be placing poles, or multiple poles in different facilities.
Hello, thank you. My name's Jeff Haran. I live on Southampton Road, so I don't, you know, there's no, nothing's going to be moved where I live right now. But I will say, you know, these are complex issues. I think everybody is seeing that. I really appreciate the discussion that we've had and how much information folks have shared. But the issues are complex. And although if you really dig, you can find where construction's going to occur. And I know Bob Parent and the Public Works Department, everyone works hard on these things. And I know the council works hard. But there really is nobody that speaks for the trees in Holyoke. And there's nobody that's looking at it from a standpoint of a vision for how Holyoke should look and what the character of each neighborhood, what was the specific character and how that character carries forward, and how important trees might be to that character and to the value, as John brought out. So there are ways to deal with that. You could have a tree committee that reviewed these kind of things. That's not easy. I mean, that's not for the faint of heart, you know? You don't want to hold up projects. But again, nobody's looking at these things right now. Verizon can come in and do it. You know, we have all this conversation. And maybe HG&E agrees to all these things. But then Verizon comes in behind them and doesn't follow any of that. But the city council could create a way to fix some of these things. It requires staff, and it requires a will to make it, to make it work. I've seen it in my, in my, in another life. I was the chief of urban forestry for the state of Maryland. And in the state of Maryland, every tree within the public right-of-way had to have a permit before it was removed in the whole state, in every single municipality in the state. And it was, it was, I wouldn't suggest that because it's an overwhelming, but they knew, you know, but somebody was overseeing that. And so, again, I'm on the Conservation Commission. I don't want to create another permitting process that creates a major bureaucratic process. But somebody needs to be looking at this in a slightly more holistic way to understand the long-term impacts on this city that was a beautiful city, still is in many ways, but we need to keep it that way. And again, thank you for the reliability and service you provide.
I think you raise a good point. And just to clarify, before any tree that is cut in the city right-of-way, we have to work with the city forester to get approval before we can cut any tree. We're not in the tree removal business. We don't want to cut trees. We want to maintain our infrastructure. Primarily, the only time we will cut a tree is if it's identified by an arborist to be dead. We will work with the city forester to get that approved to rather be more proactive rather than reactive.
Right. And I appreciate the work John does on that. But John's one person, and he can't, he's not looking ahead at all the plans and an overall vision for things. And the public's not involved in it. It's not a transparent process. And so, you know, and John's overwhelmed. I think he's parks director right now.
I hear you.
On top of things. So anyway.
I hear you. He needs more support. We're working on that. Ask the mayor. We just got to try not to cut it in the budget.
Hi, I'm Beth Burgel, and I spoke already, but I would just like to reiterate with this gentleman...
this gentleman just said. John's doing everything, so if John's in charge of picking what trees are gonna stay and what trees are gonna go, I don't know how he can possibly do that. So maybe we do need someone, or some small committee, that would at least have a more hands-on feel for what should be done and how it should be done. And I don't even know, is John even an arborist? I don't even think that he is, so, does he, does anybody know?
He's the city forester.
Yeah, he cuts down a good tree, I have to give credit for that.
That's all he can say.
But he is really stretched thin, so maybe that would be...
He also manages the parks too, like the maintenance of the parks, so...
Yeah, I know, he does a lot.
Does a lot.
So maybe we could get someone who actually knows how to trim a tree, that would be great.
I agree with you, 110%.
Hi, Mike, again, I have a question regarding poles. I know the city owns, City Gas and Electric owns approximately half the poles, and Verizon owns the other half, am I correct? Now Comcast has their fiber optic lines on all the poles, I imagine replacing poles could be quite expensive. Does Comcast in all, in any way fund any of the replacement costs of these poles? Because I know there's some very large cables running up west of the road that must, I think, feed all the way to Grammy, so if they're using our poles, the city of Holyoke's paying for the Verizon, it just seems to me that they should be covering some of the cost.
They do, they, every pole that they are on, they do pay a flat rate per pole that they attach to.
Okay.
So there is a pole attachment charge, any outside facility that attaches to one of the poles.
We'll take a couple more questions, because it's already getting, no, don't worry about it.
All right, my name is Krista Beatty, we live in Michael Park. So what I noticed, I've been observing tonight, so what I noticed you saying, we have all underground, and that's, we moved in that neighborhood about 25, 20, actually 27 years ago, and we moved there from Arizona, and we love the neighborhood, I can walk there, you know, we don't have sidewalks, but what I can say, we only had in the 27 years, what I can remember, or maybe twice, an outage of electricity because there was a problem. So you were saying that, you know, underground you have more problems, but I have not noticed that, that we had more problems because of underground. And the other question I have in our neighborhood is, we don't have a tree belt, we don't have sidewalks, so a lot of our trees have died over the years, and then the city has cut some of them down, but they leave the stump, the stump is there forever, and so we never, and I called some people at the city to ask if they would, you know, give seedlings away or anything, but we're not eligible in this area. So I don't know what the warden or the tree, who makes the decision, who is gonna get the trees, because we have a totally overgrown island between Mount, Central Park and Mountain View, which I almost got hit twice coming home late at night, people just come down because the trees, there's a big electrical box, it's totally overgrown, we can't see anything. So who makes all the decisions? Who drives around, this needs to have some maintenance, this needs some maintenance, this tree needs to be, you know, the stump is right there, it's very unsightly, so who makes those decisions? That's what, and that's what my question would be.
That would be the city forester, I believe, but as we were saying, he's just one guy right now, and who needs some support and help. Yes, there are a variety of different trees and throughout the city that need to be either pruned or cut, but he is doing a lot of work by himself, so right now, we are working on trying to help him get support, so that he can get caught up with the trees that he needs to cut down or prune back.
Well, is he in charge, excuse me, is he in charge of the island too there, which is totally because we have a big electrical box there on Mountain View and Central Park? I mean, you can't see anything when you come out of Central Park, nothing.
You can probably send an email to myself or Coco, and I'll reach out to the DPW and see who owns, who's running the island, or unless Bob could speak on it.
All right, thank you.
If the island is in the city right-of-way, which I would assume that it is, it's ultimately the DPW responsibility.
Okay.
We approve structures to be placed within the right-of-way when the requests come in, but I would imagine that's within city property.
Thank you. Oh, my man. He's out. So we're all set for the night, no more questions? Oh, come on, Todd. Do you guys have any final comments over there, HG&E? No? I would like to thank you guys for coming, this has been a wonderful conversation, I would like to thank the Holyoke Gas and Electric too as well, awesome job from all parts. Thank Councilor McGivern for still being here and giving me moral support, and motion to adjourn? Yes, please do.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.